Good evening, good afternoon, everyone. I think it's still afternoon. We've just gotten through a little bit of a rain shower to cool us off or make us even warmer. But I want to welcome everyone to the June 12th, 2023 council meeting, and I'm now going to call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with our introductions. We'll start with our city attorney.
Good evening, Patrick Baker, city attorney.
Good evening, Victoria Watlington, District Three.
Good evening, Dante Anderson, District One.
Charlie Carter, District Six.
Good evening, Malcolm Graham, District Two.
Marcus Jones, city manager.
Bye Lyles Mayor.
Renee Johnson, District Four.
Ariel Smith, Lee Clerk.
Billy Tons, Deputy City Clerk.
All right, thank you, everyone. We have this meeting in advance of our actual business meeting where we take a lot of actions on a specific agenda. But we also provide this time so that we can have questions on what we call our consent agenda. And the consent agenda items are those things that council has already discussed, approved, and funded in the budget. And so tonight, I don't believe we have any staff questions about the consent agenda, so I would ask Marie to review the questions that she received from the council. Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Good evening. And again, I've gotten a chance to speak with a few of you, and at your desk tonight, you have a question and answers that have been asked so far. One is a clarification around a business item, and the rest are consent. And I've gotten a chance to speak with Ms. Mayfield on hers, but does anybody else have any questions right now?
Any questions for Ms. Harris? All right, we have no further questions. All right, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, items number 29 through 54? We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. Is there any, well, I think, anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much. Now I'd like to recognize the city manager to walk us through the action review schedule for tonight.
So thank you, Mayor and members of council. We have two items under the action review tonight. One is an affordable housing support request or opportunity. And we secondly have a opportunity for further discussion about Project Breakpoint, which will be on your agenda tonight. So Mayor, if there aren't any questions, I could have Sean Heath come in.
Please.
A little bit of a tee up. As Sean comes in, Mayor and members of council, we've had a great level of collaboration with the county. And this is another opportunity to collaborate with the county, especially around affordable housing. You may remember Pepper Tree and what was happening with naturally occurring affordable housing. As well as you'll have on your agenda tonight, Charlotte Woods, which is another opportunity for collaboration. And tonight, we have an update on Brookhill Village, which provides another opportunity to collaborate with the county. As well as address something that's been before this council for a while. So with that said, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Sean.
Thank you, Manager Jones. I believe, as you'd mentioned, it's been over a year since we discussed Brookhill Village Apartments. And there's been a lot of activity over the last few months, so tonight's an opportunity to very quickly do a site history overview, current state, what's happening out there right now. And then quickly move into a project proposal and funding recommendation. Less than 10 slides here. And thinking with the end in mind, this presentation is building up towards a staff recommendation this evening to Manager Jones' point for a collaborative investment between City of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County to really protect 78 households that are currently at Brookhill Village, providing them with certainty for as long as they choose to stay in the community. And then also providing some predictability through the end of the ground lease period in 2049. So we'll build up to all that rather quickly and then open up for any questions that you may have. In terms of the history, so this will be a reader's digest version of the last 73 years, starting in 1950, when Brookhill Village was constructed as an African-American community with 418 low-income units and single-story attached rental units. At that time, the landowners established a 99-year ground lease that expires in 2049. And you'll recall from previous conversations about Brookhill Village and the various iterations associated with development opportunities. This ground lease has been the most significant impediment to finding a conventional development plan for affordable housing on this site. And that continues to be the case today, but we think with the county by our side, there's an opportunity for us to have a creative solution. Fast forward from 1950 to 2019, the ownership of the ground lease changed hands a number of times during that period. With Lookout Housing Ventures, which you'll recall is Tom Hendrickson's organization, acquired the ground lease in late 2019. And there was really a bold plan for an $84 million redevelopment of the site. 324 total units. It was a mixture of affordable units for 80% AMI and below, and then also some workforce units for that 80% to 110% AMI range. The initial funding request for that iteration for the city was a $10 million investment. And that was a combination of a housing trust fund ask and also some infrastructure investment. And at the same time, there was a $10 million request for CHOIF, which was managed by LISC. So an overall $20 million ask between the City of Charlotte and CHOIF. As things evolved through calendar year 2020, there were a number of conversations with city council at the time. And the proposal was modified to reflect a $3 million housing trust fund ask in late 2020, which council essentially earmarked $3 million of housing trust fund resources at the time. And it was very clear that the release of that $3 million, or the conversion of that earmark into a firm commitment, would be contingent on the developer securing a viable, credible, long-term financing structure. That unfortunately never happened, so fast forward to calendar year 2022, when the Lookout Housing Ventures development plan unraveled and the ground lease was sold. At that time, the $3 million earmark for this location was replenished back into the housing trust fund. So moving into 2022 in the March-April timeframe, that's when the Griffin Brothers Companies stepped into the equation. And they acquired the ground lease at that time for $3.8 million. And with an early termination option that expired, I think initially in March or April of this year, they've had it extended a few times in order to give an opportunity for a community response, which is what we've been working on over the last 90 days with the county. The original plan for the site, in order to really hold the economics together for the proposal, was to have project-based vouchers assigned to Brookhill Village units. That didn't work out, so, you know, and Libian goes through, just like we go through a formal evaluation process with the housing trust fund. And Libian goes through a formal evaluation with project-based voucher applications. Ultimately, they rendered a decision that this project was not eligible for PBVs in the January of 2023 timeframe. So that's when the discussions between the city and county and Griffin Brothers Companies really accelerated. Just a quick reminder on the location, so less than two miles away from Trade and Tryon, on South Tryon. You can see Brookhill Apartments as shown here in red. And it is not in South End, but it's adjacent to it. It's quite close to South End. So as everyone in here knows, you know, the tremendous transformation happening in this part of the city. It is a quite attractive location for us to look for an opportunity to preserve affordable housing units. You can see access and proximity to employment, grocery, banking, healthcare, and the blue line. So it checks the boxes on the sorts of things that we evaluate from a locational perspective when we're doing traditional reviews for housing trust fund investments. So it is a quite attractive location in that regard. In terms of the current state, going back to 2021, United Way was engaged to conduct a community needs assessment. And this gives us a good sense for the profile of the community, who lives there. So this is a little bit stale, but I wouldn't expect that there would have been dramatic changes over this time period. So in late 2021, when the survey was done, and there was a very high rate of participation in the survey. 97% African-American households, 64% female, average age of 54. A third of the households had children at the time. Three-quarters of the households had a length of residence greater than five years. And 38% of the residents had a disabling condition or retired. In terms of the 78 households that are currently occupied at Brookhill Village today, the average monthly rent across those 78 households is $466. And a third of the households are paying $400 a month. So while I did a back-of-the-envelope analysis on the 78 households, and a majority of them are 30% AMI or below. And of course, $466 would equate to what you would normally see for a 30% AMI and below type households. The average annual household income here is $23,200. So once again, this drives home the point, one of the concerns here has been, in any redevelopment scenario, what could be done to really protect these legacy residents here at Brookhill Village? Given their circumstances, how difficult it would be for them to transfer in any kind of a market rate scenario. In terms of what's happening on the site itself, you know, it's a big parcel. Overall, it's 35 acres. Most of the buildings on site have already been demolished, except for 100 housing units, 78 of which I mentioned are currently occupied. That footprint for the 100 housing units is nine acres, so that's about 25% of the overall parcel. Griffin Brothers Companies is really thinking of this location as a two-step process. And step one is advancing a solution related to the legacy residents, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. Assuming that that all comes together over the next 30 days or so. Step two, they'll turn their attention more to the balance of the parcel, the balance of the opportunity to really focus on market rate, mixed-use development. So there isn't really anything definitive that I would have to share with you tonight, other than to say, focus here is on how do you address the legacy residents? And if that can be done, then Griffin Brothers will be in a better position to determine what to do with the balance of the parcel. And just underscore once again, as you're aware, just tremendous transformation in this area, given everything that's happening in South End. Okay, so transitioning into the proposal. What is, this is what the county and the city have been working on with the Griffin Brothers Companies over the last 60 to 90 days. And this is building up to a staff recommendation for funding support. Step one here is really avoiding displacement of 78 households and preserving affordability for those households for as long as they choose to stay in the neighborhood through 2049, which is the expiration of the ground lease. Second, in addition to the 78 existing households, this overall plan would have 22 additional housing units continue to be on the Brookhill Village site. And all 100 of the units would undergo significant interior and exterior renovation. Roofwork, windows, flooring, kitchen and bathroom, painting, you know, these are 1950s buildings that are definitely in need of significant repair. So, you know, we care deeply about not just having the housing, but also the quality of the housing, and that's an important element of the project proposal. One element here that's really kind of new to the equation compared to any of the previous iterations, and it's something that we're really excited about, is the idea that the Harvest Center, which is a local nonprofit that's been here in Charlotte for over 30 years. They're focused on transitional housing and jobs. And the idea here is the Harvest Center will co-locate within Brookhill Village. They will establish, their office location would be there, it'd have a community resource center and a gym. And the wraparound services that the Harvest Center provides would be available to all 100 households. So the way this would work, just to get specific on the numbers, I'm going to populate a few more of the slides here. Think about on day one, if the city and the county were to choose to do this, 22 units would be devoted to the Harvest Center program. 78 units would be set aside for the legacy residents. The 22 units for the Harvest Center would fall into their 18-month transitional housing program. So they have individuals or families that are either homeless or at risk of homelessness. And they would have dedicated access to case management and other supports to, over an 18-month period, put them in a position where they could transition into permanent self-sufficiency. So over time, as the legacy households, the 78 households, as we would experience, as they would experience some attrition, for every two units where there's a household that moves out from the 78, one unit would be added into the Harvest Center program. And one unit would be added into the mix for the city and the county to work with community partners such as the Housing Collaborative in order to provide access to an affordable unit. So there's a mixture here of affordability, in terms of permanent affordability, quote-unquote, through 2049 for some of the units, and transitional housing through the 18-month program that the Harvest Center would have in place. And among other things, one of the things we like about the Harvest Center is with that model, over time, a higher percentage of the units will be devoted to that model. And while having a displacement event at any point in the future is something we'd like to ignore, we'd like to fully avoid. Having more of these units in the transitional housing program around 2049 is beneficial because we'd rather not put council in 2049 and the housing director in 2049 in a position where they have 78 units that are all being displaced at the same time. So the support that's been evaluated by staff and that staff is comfortable with would be a $3.5 million ARPA-funded investment. The county is evaluating a $3.5 million investment between the city and the county. That would support the allocable share of the land lease acquisition assigned to the nine acres where the affordable housing footprint would be located. The affordable unit renovation costs, which would be ballpark about $25,000 per unit. And then some degree of a rental subsidy through 2049. For the City of Charlotte with ARPA, we're still working on some of the component pieces, but we're comfortable supporting a $3.5 million investment as a recommendation. And we could envision that about a million dollars of that would be associated with the land lease acquisition. And then $2.5 million associated with unit renovation. So this is the last slide, and it's just to hit home the key points on why staff is enthusiastic about this particular opportunity. First, it's not a go-it-alone strategy. The county would be stepping in by our side. They have not had a conversation with the Board of County Commissioners yet. So, you know, I wouldn't want to assume what their ultimate decision will be. But at the staff level, they have been leaning into this just as heavily as we have. And they'll be looking for an opportunity to carry this conversation to the Board of County Commissioners in either the first week of July or the first week of August at the latest. So City of Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, the Harvest Center, all working together to address a longstanding community challenge. Once again, avoiding displacement of the existing 78 households. You know, frankly, unfortunately, we've had experience with a number of displacement events over the last 12 to 18 months. And when the city steps in to address a displacement event, it's oftentimes with incredibly hard-to-house populations. And with incredibly hard-to-house populations, even with access to local resources like the Housing Collaborative, it oftentimes takes many, many months to transition those households into permanent housing scenarios. So in the mean So, in the meantime, the city and other funders are essentially paying hotel bills. And, you know, paying hotel bills for 78 households to the tune of roughly $100 a night can add up quite quickly. So, I think there's a case that can be made that $3.5 million, in order to avoid having to pay hotel bills for 78 low-income households, would be a really smart play. I mentioned the Harvest Center and the transitional housing capacity. It's a proven model. They have this model in place elsewhere. I'm going to do a site visit next week to see it firsthand myself. We have the notion of onsite support services, wraparound services. We always talk about how, if there's a secret sauce to transitional housing and helping households and individuals be better prepared for self-sufficiency, that it's not just the housing in isolation, but they've also got to have access to support services. So, this would be there onsite and available to all 100 households, whether or not they're in the transitional housing program or not. As I mentioned before, some of the units, as households attrition out, would be available to the city in Charlotte and Mecklenburg County to work with our partners to address other members of the community that are having a hard time accessing affordable housing. And then last, the funding source here would be federal funding source from ARPA. I think that council has been very judicious with the use of ARPA for housing purposes over the last 12 months, so there's still a little bit of capacity left there. You know, it is, of course, dwindling down as opportunities emerge, but this would avoid putting any pressure on local funds. In terms of next steps beyond tonight, continue to monitor Mecklenburg County's plans around the opportunity, and then as appropriate, bring this back in for council consideration and a vote on July 10th in support of a $3.5 million ARPA-funded forgivable loan. So, it would not be a grant, it would not be a traditional kind of Housing Trust Fund loan, it would be a forgivable loan. And what would make it forgivable is, so long as all of the conditions were met associated with the permanent affordability and the transitional housing through the expiration of the ground lease in 2049, so long as all the conditions that we would put in place in the contract are met, then that amount would be forgiven. Because once again, with the ground lease at the end of 2049, the land and any improvements, and by improvements, that would be new buildings or renovated buildings, all of those assets revert to the landowner in 2049, which is what's created such a challenge here for this particular site. So, that's the whirlwind tour. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, I wanted to just make sure that, as you said, for the council commitment, there would be contingencies, along with, we would also have it contingent upon Mecklenburg County's approval.
Yes. In order for this overall plan to hold together, it would require both the city and the county step forward with that investment, correct?
All right. All right, the mayor pro tem wanted to be recognized, and we'll continue from there.
Thank you. I'm glad to see that we're still working on this, and I'm glad I know a lot of folks have, as you gave the Reader's Digest summary, people have been trying to find a solution for a while over several different councils that I've been on. My question is about slide five. It said that those 100 units will be rehabilitated. So, what is the confidence that we'll bet 100% in terms of those units being able to be rehabilitated? As you said, they're very old, and if everyone isn't able to be rehabilitated, are we saying that it'll be replaced? Like, so what's the kind of full context of that?
Yeah, it's my, I've been on the site a couple of times. I haven't done a walkthrough across all the units. It's my understanding there may be a couple of units where it's questionable what the ability will be to do a renovation, so that's something I'd have to sharpen my pencil on over the next 30 days or so. And as it relates to the households, now, to the extent that some of them would have to move during the renovation work, the idea would be to keep them there onsite, with some of the available capacity that's in place right now, some of the units that are unoccupied, moving folks into those units while the renovation work is done, and then moving back into their original residence as needed.
I guess I should correct myself. I would be bad 1,000, because we bet 100. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be good.
Right, right.
Yeah, I would like for us to follow up on that. What is the contingency if a unit isn't able to be rehabilitated? Is it going to go away? Is it going to go away and come back? Yeah.
Fair enough. Yeah, I will check on that. I do know in all the conversations I've had, it's clearly understood by all parties that our expectation is that there would be 100 units that would meet our minimum housing quality standards.
Thank you.
Ms. Watlington, followed by Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of receiving the update a little bit early and got to talk to the Griffin Brothers representative, and I was extremely pleased with where we are right now. As we all know, Brookhill has been a longstanding issue in our community, and so, even with the obstacles with not getting the vouchers from Libian, I'm glad that we're in a position to support, and I hope that, as the district rep and the housing committee chair, that my colleagues and also the county will join us in investing in Brookhill. I think that this is a great opportunity to retain housing in a very desirable area, and I think it shows what we can do when we all work together. So, I look forward to supporting, and I would ask you all to do the same. Thank you.
Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Steve, thank you for the presentation, and my apologies on running a little late. I want to go back, because I have some very specific questions. When we go back to slide three, as you know, when I represented District Three for eight years, we had a lot of conversations. There was, this has been a challenge all along, but if we go back to when Housing Ventures' development was proposed, and we were looking to allocate funds, if we go back prior to that, this initial 99-year land lease is what is set to expire in 2049, we let, unfortunately, over 300 of the units be demolished, as it went through multiple hands. So, the proposal that you have in front of us now, we have, if we jump forward to slide six, 78 occupied households will retain housing and rents, total of 100 units. Are we saying it is a total of 100 units and out of that 78? Or are we saying 78 plus 100, making it 178? Because initially, we had 418 that, under our, over the years' leadership, we allowed to have 300 of them be demolished. So, what are we saying right now?
It's a total of 100 units, and of those 100 units, 78 are currently occupied. So, the 22 that are unoccupied would presumably go immediately into this Harvest Center transitional housing program.
So, I would think that, as we're having an additional conversation of funding, versus those 22 units automatically going to the Harvest Center, that those, if those units are habitable, those are the ones that the current 78 residents need to be moved into, versus the impact of someone having to move off-site, everything that goes along with moving, getting that done first, and then looking at later on, bringing the Harvest Center in. Basically, what you're telling, what I'm reading is, this $3 million is for 78 units. Having the organization in, that's great, but for them to have 22 units when we have a very limited supply versus what we once had, when we had over 400-plus units out there, we allowed over 300 of those units to be demolished, we're now moving forward, the end goal, they're only, they're not extending it. The initial lease with the government was to 2049. So, help me understand, now that this new developer is at the table, how this plan is truly going to benefit when we lost 300 units? And I don't see in here where there's a plan to build additional units to help actually create diversity in South End, when we have seen a major displacement throughout South End that has gone from South Boulevard all the way back to Triumph, where we have 400 to $600,000 townhomes. Help me understand your vision of this ultimate goal.
Absolutely. And first, just one clarification, I was oversimplifying things too a bit. So, there would be no movement of these households off of the Brookhill Village location during the renovation period. So, there could be a period of time where not all 22 units are made immediately available to the Harvest Center. So, the first point.
That is good to know.
And the second point, I mean, it's a little hard for me to answer, other than to say that there were so many prior iterations that were tried and failed, you know, bold visions, including the one that's referenced on a slide here, to have over 300 units, a mix of affordable and workforce housing. And, you know, sadly, unfortunately, none of those came to fruition. So, to an extent, we are where we are, and this proposal is really built around, how do you make the best of the current situation between 2023, looking forward to 2049, recognizing that this may not fulfill the original promises from five to seven years ago, but with an acknowledgement that those original promises don't appear to have any viable path forward?
That I can receive. So, we're looking at keeping the original to 2049, so another 26 years, which we know a decade flies by before you know it. I'm going to hope, and I believe in the work that you and your team are doing, as we continue to figure out other pathways, but this area of town has seen major transition. We have our opportunity, and whether that opportunity for, we have another proposal later that's asking for a little bit more than this, if it means, for me, while we have access to ARPA funds, putting a little bit more money in it to get some more units, that will make more sense to me, as the area has transitioned considerably, to see if there's a possibility with Griffin Brothers Companies to have a conversation of what it would look like to truly build a diverse workforce development, because an area which we know that concentrates poverty is extremely vulnerable, because that is what we once had. So, trying to create more options in near South End that can utilize our public transportation and other things would be a conversation that I hope you and your team will be able to continue, and help them to realize that it benefits the entire city when we continue to create really great opportunities and projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sanderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sean, I think that this is a very good proposal to protect affordable housing in a critical area within the city that's very adjacent, very much adjacent to South End. I have to say, this has been a very long time in the making, and I've watched council struggle with this, as well as our partners at Libian, and I've spoken to them recently regarding this effort. As a kid, I spent time in Brookhill. My family lived in Brookhill. I lived in Brookhill, as well as South Side, and so I know what this truly means to that area, to protect affordable housing. Sean, I wanted to ask you just a little bit about the services that Harvest Center will be providing to the residents, and will that service kick in immediately once this deal is inked, or will there be a runway until they're able to begin to interface with residents?
Thank you. Yes, one of the benefits with the Harvest Center is, since they already have this type of program in place today, and they're well-staffed, that while, if this were to move forward very quickly with the city and county over the next 30 days, there would be some ramp-up period, of course, required for them beyond that limited window of time. But they can plug and play here pretty quickly, because they have a model in place. They're not starting from scratch here. And it's really a full suite of wraparound services, the types of things that we would expect to see in terms of access to health and mental health, job counseling, financial literacy, access to educational opportunities. In all case, you know, I think it's important, when we have conversations with partners like the Harvest Center, and this was well-received by me, is, they have a very focused, they have a very aligned and focused attention on particular individuals and households. So, these are not chronically homeless individuals, and that's not to say that there isn't a lot of work that needs to be done with the chronically homeless population, but these are individuals that come into the program with a willingness and capability to work. So, there's a big emphasis on ensuring that the individuals that are identified will be positioned after an 18-month period to kind of a self-sufficiency scenario.
That's great to hear, and it might also be an opportunity for us to think about how our workforce development, work that we're doing with the city, and bringing in the new role that we have as a special assistant to the city manager, how that could complement and undergird the efforts for the Harvest Center. The last thing I'd say is, you know, this project then represents roughly a third of the real estate footprint that was a part of the original Brookhill footprint. So, to the extent possible, it would be helpful if we can ensure that the development that goes, that occurs on the balance of that land, that, you know, there's, there will be mindfulness around these residents and how that development would impact the existing or the continuing Brookhill Village as that development occurs.
Understood.
Thank you, Sean.
All right. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sean, do we know the total cost for the redevelopment?
So, there are really a number of component pieces. One is the land lease acquisition, and I believe the allocable share associated with the afford, what would be this 100-unit footprint, is about $1 million, which I've referenced here on this slide. Now, staff's recommendation is essentially capped at 3.5, so if for some reason the unit renovation were more than that, then that's where, for example, the county would come in with some of the funding that they're going to be contemplating for the project. So, those are the two primary upfront pieces. And then, if you think about, you know, under a traditional development scenario where you've got a mix of units at 30%, 50%, 60%, 80% AMI, you'd see a much different revenue profile than for the 78 units here, where the average rent is a little over $450. So, we can only speculate how long each of the legacy households will stay in their units, but if you were to assume that all 78 stay in there for a prolonged period of time, the development really has fairly significant operating shortfalls on an annual basis, because there are property taxes and operations and maintenance. So, you know, all of this with affordable housing boils down to the math and the economic equation. And so, in addition to those upfront costs that I mentioned that are real, then there's also essentially an operating shortfall, just given the fact that, unlike with our traditional NOAs, where typically you have no 30% households that are currently in the development, here's a scenario where over half of the existing households are at 30% AMI levels.
Okay, thank you. So, that's $3.5 million from the city, and then $3.5 million from the county as well?
Yes, and as I mentioned, they have not made any commitments. The Board of County Commissioners has not had an opportunity yet to have this kind of a conversation, but that's what county staff is evaluating.
So, that's $7 million toward the project. What is, what are the total costs? How much, how much is the developer contributing to the project?
Yeah, this would really be, this is very much apples and oranges with what we traditionally do. I mean, in terms of the total development cost, the upfront costs are the types of things that I've referenced here, and to the extent, there are also some demolition costs for the site as well. So, I don't have a specific number, other than to say, there are specific known costs that we, the city, would fund under this kind of a scenario, and they would be costs that either have already been incurred, like the land lease acquisition, or costs that are soon to be incurred, like the renovation costs. The county is contemplating spreading their investment over time. I don't know if it would be all the way through 2049, but their investment would likely look a little bit more like a rental subsidy kind of a program, to make up for that operating shortfall that would otherwise be experienced on the site. I mean, the idea for Griffin Brothers Companies is not to make a profit on this piece. The idea is to cover costs, essentially, in order to address the affordable situation for the 78 legacy households. Griffin Brothers will have the balance of this parcel, you know, the other 25 acres, to look for market rate-type opportunities.
Okay, so, then the $7 million, does that cover, like, 100% of the cost for the 78 units, and then Griffith Brothers, they will cover, like you said, the other 25 acres? Okay.
Yes. There is nothing that we are contemplating, either the city or the county, where our funding would in any way subsidize what the Griffin Brothers Companies is planning on doing in the balance of the parcel, which would focus on market rate development.
Okay, okay. So, then, these units are 100% publicly funded?
What's being contemplated here, yes, and that's what has... Yes, and that's what has been the challenge in terms, because we were asking the same questions as Councilmember Mayfield, and well, what's the right number of units? And should it be 78, or should it be 100, or should it be something larger than 100? Now, with each unit that we add to the mix, it would require a commensurate investment by the city and the county. So we felt like 100 was the sweet spot, because it preserves the 78 for the legacy residents, and it enables us to introduce the Harvest Center into the equation, so they would have some units fairly quickly to put into their transitional housing program.
And you said it was a forgivable loan?
That's, yes, because, yes, that's how we would structure this.
Okay.
It'd be like a grant with strings attached.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sean, let me congratulate you and Councilmember Wallington for solving the puzzle. This is something that me and your predecessor tackled over for two and a half years and was unable to get it to the finish line. So I know there's a lot of hard work, a lot in the deal-making in terms of getting it to this point. I will caution you, though. And when I worked for beds for kids, I worked, serviced Brook Hill on a number of occasions, so I've been in those units before. There's a reason why those 22 units are not open, right? And so I just caution you and your staff, if you go to try to use some of those units for transitional housing, while others are being built, that may not work very well. Even in a transitional situation, people deserve safe, clean, and affordable housing. And so I just caution you on that, that I like the direction that you're going into.
Okay, fair point.
Mr. Bakari?
A quick question. What will, what will happen, in your opinion, if the council does not act?
Good question. So I'll speculate a little bit, but I think this is our best assessment of the current situation. I think in all likelihood, if the city and county are unable to do this, then you could see the most likely scenario, in my view, is the early lease termination option would be exercised, because if there's not a solution for this piece of Brook Hill, I don't think there's a solution for any of Brook Hill. And if the ground lease termination option is exercised, then it would really be up to the landowners to decide what to do. I think we're starting to reach a point where it becomes less and less likely that they would just allow for the status quo to continue for an extended period of time. I think that there would be a displacement event at some point. I wouldn't try to predict when it would be. But, you know, it's an enormous piece of property. There is potential, and I think we're reaching the point where it is more likely that there would be a displacement event that would occur. And then it would be up to the city and county to decide to what level would we want to participate in supporting the humane displacement. And I think it's been our pattern to look for opportunities to be supportive when we can. And it gets back to my point before, that I think this solution provides so many more benefits than if we were to find ourselves in a situation where 78 households needed hotel rooms, and we paid for hotel rooms for six to 12 months without really anything to show for it, other than the importance of keeping those individuals housed. There'd be nothing to show for it through the long term of 2049.
All right. Mr. Bakari, anything else?
All right. I too, I've been around since the 2020 discussions with Tom Hendricks on each of these, and this is actually the first thing that I could see that could work. So again, thank you for all of you that have participated in making this happen. I look at this pretty simply. It's basically, if everything is done well, then perhaps there'll be some leniency on this land lease. But even with that land lease for two years, we're basically keeping people housed for a rental amount that we probably would have to pay no matter what, as Sean said, you know, a hotel room or providing them a place to live for two years. And I think that is significant, when it's also bolstered by the idea that we can do some work with the Harvest Center around workforce development. So we're still going to be, I think, deeply engaged in this. It's not an easy project to deal with, and I understand this is really kind of different from the development part. For the Griffin Brothers, they have an obligation, but they too are going to wrestle with these two years. This land lease has been a real problematic position for most of anyone that wanted to touch this property. But I would say, Sean, I think it would be very helpful to go ahead and get this on the agenda as quickly as possible. These folks have waited a very long time. They've gone through a lot. And then the second thing I'd like to say is that I think we ought to actually do a little bit of history about, you know, the site again, to show what we can do, and I think catalog this is another opportunity to put in our toolbox, because if there are other places to do, and we can get people a place, a decent place to live, and job training, perhaps we're doing the right thing. So I want to say, let's move forward on this as soon as we can, and work, and thanks to the county for agreeing to participate with us. You know, we often talk about, you know, collaboration, but this time is truly one, so thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments? Harry Nun, Sean, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
So thank you, Sean, and I echo what the mayor just said in terms of how important it is to have the collaboration with the county. So it's great from a staff level that we're working on these projects together. And the last item that we have tonight for the action review is Project Breakpoint. I know there were a number of questions that were asked the last time we were before you on this topic, as well as a Q and A that was sent out late last week. So we just wanted to provide an opportunity here in 267 for any additional follow-up there.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Dodson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. We want to give you just a really quick overview of Project Breakpoint, refresher on what you've already seen, but also cover some of the Q and A that was sent out last week. Then we'll open it up for questions. We have Ford Perry here again. Teresa Smith is here as well, so we're here to answer any questions that you may have. If you remember from this, the real opportunity is for us to attract the Western Southern Open and relocate it to Charlotte. This is a 1,000 tournament, men's and women's. This will go in coming years from a 56 draw to a 96 draw tournament, which means that it will go to a two-week tournament, as well as have tremendous amount of international exposure, which, in my lens, gives us a lot of business growth opportunities with 39 countries in all 50 states. You can see that this will be a world-class facility for the Western, the Western Southern, as well as regional tournaments. It will have community activation with more than 40 courts and four stadiums, all set in this park-like setting. And it also has the opportunity to create an entertainment hub with concerts and festivals and other community events. If we go to the Q and A that was sent out last week, this is, these were questions that were represented that we heard from both the city as well as the county, and we really divided them into four areas: community impact, economic impact, workforce development, and environmental considerations. If we look at the economic impact, Ford presented this slide when he was here in May. The tournament impact is 275 million, with more than 350,000 visitors annually. You can see how it compares out to Indian Wells outside of LA, as well as the Miami Open. And then on the other side of the slide, you will see how that also compares to our golf tournaments that we've had here in recent years. If you add in what the other regional events can be, and such as conferences and other tournaments, the music, the concert, as well as the community events, your impact grows to more than 200 event days a year, to more than 300 million annually in economic impact, and 650,000 attendees throughout the year. So kind of to recap all of that, you get more than 300 million annually in the support of over 2,500 jobs in Mecklenburg County. If you add in the construction for that, you grow to an economic impact of over $1 Moving on to the community impact, when Ford was here in May, he talked, he showed you this slide, and he talked about affordable access. He talked about their commitment to hiring a director of community programming that would handle after-school programs, as well as summer camps. They would also have the scholarship and continue the Learn to Play, scholarships with the Learn to Play Academy, and we also have talked about the public park and open space commitment onto the site. Since then, they've expanded, and this was in your Q and A, this commitment to have the community programming director, but also a community advisory board. And where this came from is we really, as we started to talk about all these different things that they would potentially do within the community, we felt like it was important to have a board that really assessed the needs of what they would be delivering. So this also includes financial needs based on needs assessment, as well as what are the needs with some of the youth, what are the small business engagement opportunities? So really having a board in place that consistently thinks about that community engagement and outlook. The other piece that was important to note, and I don't know if anybody took the time to count it like I did, but the calendar that was in your Q and A highlighted the public court use, and if you add it up, they have more than 40 weeks in the year that would be committed to more than 20 courts open to public access. So you think about that, and that's 80% of the year. That's really significant of what our community can have access to, and that's a significant number of courts as well. Going to the workforce development, and the MWSBE commitment is 20%. We've started to talk to Ford and the team about doing things such as a dashboard. This is not new for us. We've talked to Atrium and other big public investment projects about having a similar kind of thing. We will work closely with CBI and Steve's team to track this as it goes, as it goes through. They've committed to fair wage contracts, as well as a boost in growing this entertainment industry. One thing I want to point out here, and I've said it, but one of my commitments as we move through this, is starting to think about workforce development, training around the hospitality. We've talked about it with film, but what are the other opportunities? You hear Tom Murray stand up here all the time and talk about one in nine jobs in our cities around the hospitality industry. I really want us to get more organized, what can we do to grow and continuously grow this industry and support this industry? In addition, they will have more than 60 full-time jobs on-site, and that's with that 2,500 of jobs created in Mecklenburg County. The environmental considerations, this embraces the River District vision, the soul of a city and the heart of nature. And remember that Envision 2 is about creating a community for everyone that's affordable and inclusive. It will all be in a park-like setting that will include greenways, open space, amphitheater, and they've also committed to sustainable construction practices as well. They have a lot of lessons learned, if you look at the Daniel Island campus, that they can bring here, and that would apply within the River District. I got a question along the way about how we might invest our money, and I want to make sure that I addressed it. While we don't have it set yet, and we want to wait and see what the other public investment between the county and the state will come in at, these are some examples of how we might invest. Our hospitality dollars are geared towards amateur sports. And so when I look at this with the lens, working with Teresa and legal and general services, we will start to look at these kind of examples where maybe it's we are investing in two of the stadiums, or in the indoor courts with parking. Another example, maybe we invest in three of the stadiums and some of the outdoor practice courts. So there's a lot of different ways that we could go in how our investments go, but one of the things that I need to do is wait and see where, what kind of parameters the county investment wants to see, or what kind of parameters the state investment might want to see. And then we'll all work together with that city team, like I said, between finance, general services, legal, and economic development, to determine what works best for our dollars. So in closing, this is a great opportunity, we think, for Charlotte to add a world-class tournament, create this regional destination, be a catalyst for the West Side, create this entertainment venue. Remember I said 200 potential events in a year? Significant community access, all while being this large economic generator for our community. And in the RCA, it says, "with a 25-year commitment." So this is not something that is short-lived. This commitment is here for a long time and will be a great catalyst, we believe, on the West Side. Lastly, you will have the vote tonight. As I mentioned, we'll determine the other public investment, the city and, excuse me, the county and the state. We'll work with the River District team on infrastructure and timing, how that plays into this bigger approach. We'll also continue working with the airport property on the parking that was mentioned on their site, which is immediately across Dixie River Road from the site that BMO is looking at. And then we'll work with all the public investment to create a master development agreement, as I mentioned before. So those are kind of the next steps, once we get through tonight, and the upcoming county and state decisions as well. With that, I will stop to see if there's questions.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Dodson? Mr. Mitchell?
Teresa, CFO, real quick.
Yes, good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to be clear on the funds in our tourism bucket that we're going to use to support this, so what's the total balance right now?
So the first part of your question, which funds would we use? We would be looking at convention center funds for this. And if you recall, all of these hospitality tax revenues, the way that they are determined by the state is how we can spend those. So it is the occupancy and prepared food and beverage tax that's within the convention center that can be spent on amateur sports.
Correct.
So that is, that is the first part. Your second question around the balance, I think what you are looking for is kind of an affordability, and so what we have looked at is this investment of 65 million from the convention center funds. We've also talked about the 20 million that would be used for Eastland, which is also an agenda item for you tonight. And then that would leave around 260 million in affordability if we issued debt today.
Got it.
And so again, if you think about how that affordability works, the more that we push things out, that affordability changes. Again, so this is just a calculation based on the information that we know today.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Watlington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've just got a couple of questions as follow-ups to many of the workforce development items that I saw, and thank you for bringing that. If you could go back to that slide, the workforce development slide. Yep, right there, thank you. So as far as the MWSBE participation, I appreciate the comments around the dashboard and tracking, and some of the benchmarking from Atrium. As a broader policy discussion, Madam Mayor, one of the things I feel like has come up often is, once these are happening, how do we then go see what has been delivered and what tracking there is, or what contingencies might there be based on the conditions that we agreed upon? So I don't know if that needs to be a committee referral, or what that needs to look like, but I do feel like that is something that I'd love for us to explore, just to make sure that we're all clear about with city funds and public dollars, and how that ties into some of our commitments around equity, and how we make sure that that's followed through the whole process. So I'll leave that with you. The next thing I want to talk about is, I really am happy to see this fair wage contracts piece. I know that still needs, the specifics of that still needs to be worked out, but what particularly sticks out to me is, not only is it the tennis staff, but it's the vendors, the tournament personnel, and service providers. Certainly, oftentimes at the airport, we come up with these discussions, because there are so many other types of employees at the airport beyond city staff, and so I'm very interested to see how this follows through the rest of the process, because I think it's important that as we talk about economic impact, that it is economic impact to everyone, including the third-party workers. Two questions, and it is on the city investment examples? Yep. So I just would like to understand, I hear that we've still got to figure out what it is that the city is actually investing in. Can you just give a little color around, for this particular example, what would be the city's kind of ownership stake, or what that really means in terms of, I'll say, governance going forward?
So that's something we would work up closely with our legal team, with finance. I mean, that's kind of how we work through all of these, because they're all a little bit different, really. Who owns what, who's operating, maintaining, things like that, and we will work through a lot of those pieces, as we also work with the county. Are they gonna, are they gonna operate any part of this, or maintain any part of this as well? But then, I want to head to another thing, because I think this is another question that you had, not to jump ahead, but once we identify that, we will have a structure in place where we're essentially reimbursing, and that's where general services will then step in, and they verify the work, and then BMO is reimbursed for that work. So that's kind of how it works. We set up the basic fundamental bucket and the terms, and then we will go through,
We set up the basic fundamental bucket and the terms, and then we will go through, like, what does the ownership look like? What does the O and M look like? And then we get down to, okay, now, once there's construction, general services really starts to play a role in monitoring that to make sure that we're verifying what we're paying for.
Awesome. Thank you for that. And then my last question is just, what happens if the full public investment isn't realized?
That's a good question for Ford.
So the question would be if the budget did not meet what the commitment was? I doubt that's going to be an issue. However, if that was the case, and I'm sort of spitballing here, but I could foresee a conversation, and all of this would obviously be agreed upon, where we would create a capital investment fund with the excess funds to invest in the facility, the publicly-owned assets of the facility over time. But I think there's plenty of investment here in a project that we've estimated in excess of $400 million, which will likely go up for the next three years, to find the right allocation of the public dollars.
All right. Ms. Ajmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy, thank you so much for addressing all the questions. I did get an opportunity to review memo that you had sent to us, so that addressed some of my concerns. Even though that Eastland is mutually exclusive to this, I wanted a written assurance. I appreciate you addressing that as well. And Teresa had done a presentation to the Budget Committee on Affordability and Hospitality Funds. That was last week, and that really helped us look at our hospitality revenue and some of the projections. So I think that was a really good presentation ahead of this, to sort of help us prepare for this. I had asked questions about, I had asked this question earlier, which I didn't get a straight answer to, about what is our chance of getting it? And I know you probably can't say that, but I will say this, that I definitely hope that you will select our city. I think you will hear from our community that, how much this means to our city. I mean, this is a huge catalyst. It's going to create a destination for our region. It's going to create millions of dollars in economic impact. I mean, this is really a transformative project, and I would like to see this where this will become a reality. So I certainly appreciate you considering Charlotte for this great opportunity. Thank you.
Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions, if we can go back a couple of slides. Tracy, I'm looking at the slide that you, that was sent to council, but I don't, we can go back to Slide 4 as an example. So we have on here, you know, stadium 1, 2, 3, 4. Just for clarification, if there was a, because you're looking at this being multiple events for basically a year-round location, would that be the events happening at the stadiums or the stadiums as well as the center court, like we use, the current NFL stadium?
Board check me, but if I say anything incorrect. But I mean, really, when we say 200 events, it's really utilizing the campus as a whole, right? That might not be in the main stadium every time. That might be in some of the smaller stadiums. It would be a mix across the campus.
And on the map, I can't quite tell the access points from this one, because this is off on the backside of 485. What I want to make sure, and that'll be our transportation, planning and transportation, to really look at, so that we don't have what we have at one of our venues now, where it is a complete bottleneck for the residents, for anyone trying to attend that particular venue space, making sure that we not only have the parking, which I have a challenge to giving up 100 acres of the airport for parking, that's a different conversation, but making sure that these roads are aligned in a way where it is not going to impact the residential community, because as was noted, this is only like 4% of the 1,700 acres. But yet, the egress, the egress and regress of this could cause major challenges. In any of our photos, do we show what that looks like or what you're considering for transportation needs?
So let me go back really quickly.
Because I know we had already talked about having public transportation access out there, which would be helpful for the workers, but if you can show what that will look like, that would be helpful.
So a couple of things on this. One, what you see here, the road, the two gray lines that go from top to bottom of the site plan, that would be an extension of Garrison Road, which would connect to the new West Boulevard as well as Dixie River Road. Councilmember Mayfield, you are part of the envisioning of River District, and you may remember that, as that was envisioned, it was envisioned for 8 million square feet of office, so it was contemplated that it was going to get dense with a lot of activity. And we thought through some of that infrastructure of how it's phased. So the growth of the infrastructure should fall in line with the growth of the River District as well. Separate to that, one of the things that we will start to dive into, and we had a conversation as recent as last week, is the larger traffic management plan. We've done it with all of our major events on how do we move people? What's the most effective way? So you don't have some of what you're seeing around in certain venues right now, which is this bottleneck of people trying to get in and out. That will take a lot more coordination, I think, on our part with CNPD and CDOT, getting really smart about how these tournaments operate. Learned a lot over the years about how the golf tournaments operate, when people are coming, when people are going, and things like that. Ford was very quick in the beginning to tell us, it's different. It's different than golf. And so that's one thing that we have to work through. We've even talked also about other satellite sites, right? So everybody can be close to the site, but maybe not all parking right here, trying to get in and out at peak times.
So even with the addition of the 100 acres that we're considering allocating just for parking, and the parking that will be onsite, based on your previous experience with the tournaments, you're not anticipating that being enough parking?
That's correct.
So I just think we have an opportunity, since this is a clean slate, opposed to trying to think about just the law enforcement part of directing traffic, because that's great when you're trying to get to the event. At the end of the night of any event, you're on your own, trying to figure it out to get in and out. I just think we have an opportunity, if this council is going to move forward with it, my one vote ain't going to make that much of a difference either way, but if we're going to move forward with it, let's look at making sure that we have a road structure that accounts for residents, school buses, whatever public service we need, and for event space, so that we don't do what we're having to do off of Mount Holly and other areas, where years later, we're having to go in and make a considerable investment to do a road widening, if we already foresee that if this is successful, the River District is going to be successful regardless. But if we have an event venue space that potentially can bring the attendance that is estimated, we can plan for that on the front end and be just much more conscious about making sure that we have access, because the worst thing you need is there be an accident or a need for service, and you cannot get to them because of that bottleneck.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to piggyback off Councilmember Mayfield. As far as that slide, parking, the allocation for parking, is a TIG possible tool for this project, since we're looking at supporting parking?
So TIG is already contemplated for the River District, for Crescent. So that is separate, that helps to support the infrastructure out here. So widening of Dixie River Road, Garrison Road, that was, again, contemplated several years ago when we made, when we did the entitlement process for River District.
So there couldn't be a TIG considered for this project specifically?
No, we're not looking at a TIG for this project, because, like I said, there's already one for River District, which encompasses this site as well.
Okay. And then, secondly, we are talking about a transformational, international event. It's exciting. One of the things I think that we really have to consider is the name Dixie River Road. I want to be the first one to mention that, if we have not.
I think it's been under consideration, so it's been thought about.
Okay, so we, I would think we definitely want to take a look at that, if it's something that we're hoping to draw folks from all over the world. Thank you.
And I think you would see the support from the Crescent team as well to change the name.
Ms., oh, I had Ms. Anderson and then Ms. Molina. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Tracy, thank you for this update. You know, the last time you were in front of us, I shared my excitement and enthusiasm about this project being an additional crown, an additional jewel within our crown, especially as it relates to professional sports. But I really also am happy to see the additional community impact piece that we have here, because it demonstrates that BMOC is very serious about community engagement and accessibility from an affordable aspect for youth and college students that are in the area. So in addition to having a vibrant event that's world-class for a two-week period here in the city of Charlotte, it will also expose youth to professional tennis in a way that they would not be able to be exposed. And I think that is tremendous, and it builds on the history of tennis within our community. I see Coach Davis sitting here and his full commitment to preserving and growing tennis within the city of Charlotte. So I look forward to the vote for this project, and I think it is going to have great benefits across the board, both from an economic development perspective, but from a community engagement as well. Thank you.
Ms. Molina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, first off, I want to congratulate you guys for taking the time to be considerate of both sides of town. That means a lot. I'm sure it means a lot to the people in East Charlotte. And thank you for being patient as we landed. We're attempting to land, we still got to get through this thing. We are attempting to land two planes, as I told you before when you were here. I realize that that could be something to, you know, realize that you're coming into a situation with an existing open opportunity, but I really hope that it'll be the will of the council that we're able to do two things. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. And Ms. Dodson, I just need you to clarify one thing for me. Someone, you said 20 million. I want to make sure that we're clear. We explain what is the commitment to Eastland, because I need that loud and proud, because I need my phone to not ring as soon as I talk out of here. So can you please clarify that?
Councilmember Molina, let me start with, we are still 100% committed to Eastland. Nothing changes. And we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I think if you look at the proposals that are in front of us, one is for 30, one's for 28 roughly, what we were trying to lay out is looking at the combination of hospitality as well as CIP. They're a little bit different for the two, between the two, for a total commitment up to 30 million. So nothing has changed there.
Okay.
What Teresa was referring to is 20 million out of hospitality.
Ah, okay. Thank you, Teresa. You, I had heartburn for just a millisecond. I feel better, I'm going to have a drink of water. Thank you for being patient with us. I am elated to potentially add a new jewel to our crown and resolve a longstanding issue on the opposite side of town as well, potentially, so I'm looking forward to the vote.
All right. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to answer a question. Councilmember Wallington asked earlier in reference to really highlighting minority participation on high-profile projects. So we've already talked into Mr. Croker, and just like we're highlighting Seventh and Tryon, what we're doing at the Pearl, this will be one of those items that we really take a look at at committee from time to time, those high-profile projects that everyone's talking about, making sure that the commitments we make on the front side are being carried throughout. So I'm 100% with you there. Secondly, let me thank everyone for being patient with me for the last several months. This has been a big project for the city, right? And it goes beyond the tennis. It's an economic opportunity for travel and tourism and jobs that we can have fun at the same time doing. I'll save the floor speech for tonight, but this is a unique opportunity. As we stated, Charlotte is built on private-public partnerships, and this is a classic example of what we historically have done. And I think an affirmative vote tonight will demonstrate five, 10 years from now, when you're off council and the tournament comes to town, you can say that you were a part of that and bringing it here, because the ripple effects, both internationally, statewide, in our county and our city, is going to be tremendous. And it's really an exercise in community building. Councilmember Mayfield, when she was here before, generated interest in the River District, but for that interest, then, we wouldn't be here today, having the opportunity to really put together a piece, a small piece over there, that's going to have a huge community impact. So I look forward to the vote tonight. I have more to say about all the other stuff that comes with it. I think the public needs to know exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it, so I'll make those comments tonight. But I'm cautiously optimistic that we are a forward-thinking council and that we'll have a good result at the meeting. Thank you.
Did you say cautiously optimistic? Thank you. Cautiously.
It ain't over until it's over.
Yes, I understand. So I believe that, Mr. Jones, do you have any other requirements?
That's it.
We have, we will start at 6:30. Well, we really will try to start at 6:30. If everyone gets downtown, I'm downstairs, that would be very helpful. Thank you very much. This session will now resume in about five minutes. Everyone, thank you for joining us for the Charlotte City Council meeting. I want to call this meeting to order. This is our June 12 business meeting. Before we have this meeting, we have an opportunity to have briefings, and we had two briefings this afternoon. One on Brook Hill Village Affordable Housing or rehabilitated housing, as well as on a project that we'll later on discuss at the River District during this meeting. So I want to say thank you for joining us. If you're joining us virtually or watching us just on television or on our government channel, and especially to those of you who come and sit in our comfy chairs with the long steps that we hope that you can make your way down carefully. So I want to call this meeting to order and we'll begin with introductions and we'll start with our city clerk.
Billy Tons, Deputy City Clerk.
Happy Monday, Dimple Ashmira, at large.
Good evening. I am Marjorie Molina. I represent District 5.
Good evening, everyone. James Mitchell, at large.
Good evening, Renee Johnson, District 4.
Good evening and happy Pride Month. LaWanna Mayfield, Councilmember at Large.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Good evening, Vi Lyles, Mayor.
Braxton Winston, Mayor Pro Tem.
Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Dark McCarty, District 6.
Good evening and happy Pride, Dante Anderson, District 1.
Good evening. I'm Victoria Wallington, your Charlotte City Councilmember representing District 3.
Patrick Baker, City Attorney.
All right. We begin our meeting with an expression of inspiration followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. This expression can be anywhere from an invocation to just whatever the council member that's doing this in this time speaks to or feels that serves us all well. I want to say that if you choose to join us in prayer, because I am doing the invocation tonight, please do so. But I also recognize that not everyone has the same kind of religious faith or disposition. And so please judge your, and take, judge your own path of how you would like to join us or if you would like to join us. I would ask you to, again, if you choose to, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards. So if I can have a moment of prayer, I want to say I'm actually reading this prayer because it was read by the U.S. Senate Chaplain Barry Black. And I, he said it to the Senate in Washington, D.C. And it kind of spoke to me. So if you would bow your heads. Eternal and dependable Creator of the universe, we acknowledge you as the giver of every good and perfect gift. You are our solid rock. You warm, you arm us with strength. Thank you for the seasons and the climate, for the sowing and the reaping, for the color and the fragrance. Thank you for the time of harvest when our labors and dreams are rewarded. Today bless this council, illumine their lives to keep them on the right path. May the creative power of your word produce in them a stronger faith and an indomitable hope. Keep them from slipping, fill them with courage as you show them your unfailing love. Give them an attitude of openness to receive the fullness of your grace and truth. We pray in your precious name. Amen. Thank you. If we would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you choose.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This council is very much aware of many of the good works that are going on in our community. And we'd like to actually recognize a number of these tonight. And we're going to start with Juneteenth. We have a proclamation that whereas on June 19, nearly two and a half years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, Union soldiers led by General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, bringing to some of the last enslaved Americans news of their legal status as free persons. The 19th of June has become nationally recognized as Juneteenth to commemorate the abolition of slavery and to honor the strength, determination, and triumphs of African-Americans in the face of extreme oppression and hardship. On this anniversary of Juneteenth this year, individuals and communities and organizations across North Carolina and the nation celebrate African-American heritage, culture, freedom, and tradition. And now in our proclamation, whereas charlatans of all colors, creeds, and origin share a love of and respect for freedom, and whereas work is underway in Charlotte to eliminate current effects of past and current racial discrimination within policing, housing, financial lending practices, job placement, and other sectors of our society. Whereas the city of Charlotte encourages all people to observe Juneteenth as a day to reflect and learn from the past, a day of healing and renewal, and a day to spur on the efforts to build a brighter future for everyone that lives in this great city and this great country. Now therefore, I, Vi Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth in our city. Thank you very much. And now I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Braxton Winston for another recognition.
Thank you. Whereas Tourette Syndrome is an inherited neurological disorder that is characterized by involuntary physical and vocal tics that occur many times a day. Whereas Tourette Syndrome is often accompanied by other mental health disorders such as attention deficit and obsessive-compulsive disorder, learning disabilities, and anxiety. And Tourette Syndrome and persistent tic disorders affect 1 in 50 children. More than 22,871 school-aged children in the state of North Carolina alone are dealing with Tourette Syndrome. And although some of these cases are aided by medication, there is no standard treatment or known cure for the disorder. Whereas there is an important need for many, for more professional help with interests and expertise to identify, counsel, and treat people with Tourette Syndrome, a disorder that is often misdiagnosed and misunderstood. And whereas positive actions to assist children and families living with Tourette Syndrome would result from a broadening of public and professional knowledge and acceptance of Tourette Syndrome. And whereas the Tourette Association of America is actively providing services to families, educating medical professionals and teachers, Vi Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, do hereby proclaim May 15 through June 15, 2023, as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Month.
And we'd like to invite.
Josiah Allen, Garrett Lane, and Mal McInnis, who are all members of the Greater Carolinas Tourette Support Group down.
If you would join us over on this side, the proclamations are at the clerks, at the clerk's desk. Our next recognition will be presented by Councilmember Dante Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the city of Charlotte is the home to a vibrant and diverse community, among which are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ citizens and residents. And whereas Charlotte's LGBTQ community, their families, friends, neighbors, and coworkers have positively shaped the cultural, business, civic, faith, and social fabric of Charlotte throughout its history. And whereas the month of June is traditionally celebrated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month, commemorating the historic uprising of LGBTQ people of color, trans people, and young people at New York City Stonewall Inn on June 28, 1969, which served as a catalyst for the resulting gay liberation movement and the June 28, 1970 Christopher Street Liberation Day March, from which all modern Pride events trace their origins. And whereas Charlotte's LGBTQ community first attempted to organize socially and politically as early as 1971, with its first event formally finally held in 1981, and the ensuing decades inspiring the creation of Charlotte Pride in 2000 and Charlotte Black Pride in 2005. And whereas community members will join together throughout June and continuing in July with Charlotte Black Pride and in August with Charlotte Pride to celebrate the history, culture, community, and triumphs of the LGBTQ plus people across our region. Now therefore, she, Vi Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, does hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month in Charlotte. does hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month in Charlotte and commend its observance to all citizens. There are a number of great LGBTQ plus leaders within the community here that I would like to ask to come down and receive the proclamation. And I will read some names here so you can understand who they are. Mel Morris, Chad Turner, Tyrell Lowry, Riley Murray, Elizabeth Cho, and of course Cameron Pruitt. Can you all come down and receive the proclamation?
And our next presentation is by Councilmember James Smudgy Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas gun violence is a major public health problem in the United States, which includes not limited to gun violent assaults, suicide, homicides, domestic violence, and mass shooting. And whereas more than 321 Americans are shot and killed daily by guns. In North Carolina, an average of 1,588 deaths are caused by guns each year, ranking us 23rd in the nation for gun deaths. Whereas the city of Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, are committed to reducing gun violence and will continue to support violence prevention initiatives highlighted in the way forward. Our strategic plan for reducing community violence throughout the county, which includes community-based violence interruption programs, gun safety awareness and education, gun lot distribution, Safe Charlotte initiatives, and other community-led violence prevention programs. Whereas many violent crimes and suicide involves the use of a firearm, the Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department, along with community partners, are taking steps to reduce these numbers through training and education, partnering and engaging with the community in reducing the number of firearms on our streets. Whereas gun violence awareness highlighted in June, but must be communicated daily. Daily. We can all work to end gun violence so that the city of Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, remains a safe, vibrant, and healthy community for all. Now therefore we, Vi Alexander Lyles, the Mayor of Charlotte, and George Dunlap, the Chair of Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim this month as June as Gun Violence Awareness Month. And I'd like to say a special thank for all my colleagues are wearing orange in celebration. Would Ms. Tracy Campbell please come forward and accept this proclamation?
I want to say thank you to our community for being a caring community and a community that understands celebrations, but also when we have tough times, understand that we can all work together to resolve some of these issues. And so now we'll go to our first item on our agenda, item number 10. Mr. Jones, do you have a manager's report for us tonight?
Yes, Mayor, very quick one, and then I'll turn it right back over to you for the FY '24 budget. And this individual doesn't know what's about to happen to him, but it will be fun. So, we have Brian Dosa with us. And Brian's all the way in the back. Hey, Brian. Brian is a part of ICMA's City-City Manager Fellowship Program with Army Civilian Fellows. So, we're one of 16 cities across the country that have a Army Civilian Fellow with us. So, he will be with us for this week. He started off, I guess, yesterday flying in thinking that he would arrive last night, but he slept in the airport in Texas. And he made it in. And the great thing about Brian, he is the Director of Public Works, and he's responsible for what used to be Fort Hood, but now it's Fort Cobazos? Did I get that right? Okay. Facilities and infrastructure, as well as municipal services, engineering, environmental activities, and family housing. So, we'll learn a lot from Brian this week, and Brian will learn a lot from us. And it's great that your first day here, you get to see a council look into approving a budget. So, you get the full service, okay, Brian? Thanks for being here.
Welcome. All right, so now we will go to the business portion of our agenda, and item number 11. Do I have a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2024 operating budget and fiscal years 2024 to 2028 capital investment plan as specified in Agenda Item 11? Someone?
To approve A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K.
And that is about right. She's gotten all of that about right. There's a lot of ABCs and Gs in here. So, with that, so we have any discussion of the motions? Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The adoption of the city's annual budget, it's one of our most vital functions. I want to thank you, our residents, our employees, for coming out and providing your insight throughout this process. I'd like to thank the Budget Committee, Vice Chair Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Mayfield, Ms. Anderson, and Mr. Bukhari, and the entire council for providing valuable insight as we developed this budget, along with the City Manager, our financial expert and guru, and the budget staff. I would like to, if you could all stand so we can recognize you, all your hard work over last several months. Thank you. It was a balancing act. Ah, what a pun. When we talk about our budget and talk about our priorities, our budget reflects our priorities. This $3.3 billion budget, it truly reflects our priorities in affordable housing, investments in our infrastructure, addressing public safety while making increased investments in our workforce. I know we have some leaders here from our workforce appreciate your advocacy. Because of these deliberations, we have a balanced budget that makes these increased investments without raising taxes. Let me repeat, without raising taxes. And this is the fifth straight year without a single property tax increase. And thanks to Mr. Jones and the entire budget team for making this balanced budget possible. This is just a testament to our commitment to public safety. And I want to highlight how this budget increases pay for fire, police, our lowest-paid hourly employees, 11% for our lowest-paid hourly employees. And this puts us at the top when it compares to top 20 peer cities. And I think that's something we all got to be proud of. It funds two additional fire companies and 42 additional fire staff. Increased investments in our corridors of opportunities, increased investments in our business, small business entrepreneurs, and improving our workforce development opportunities. So, this budget has it all. If you go to our website, charlottenc.gov/budget, you will see how this budget addresses all of our priorities. But I just really would like to thank our City Manager for the hard work that he, Mr. Jones, and his team has done to present this budget. And it really has been an honor to work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ashmira. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo with what Councilmember Ashmira said. It is an honor to be a part of this process, voting on a $3.3 billion budget and being able to vote to raise the salaries for city employees, for the Charlotte firefighters and police officers. So, it's just an honor. I also want, for the record, Mr. Jones, and I've already sent this information over to you on page 18, when we referred to the University City Partners, and that's District Four in University City. So, I just wanted the record to reflect that. And again, it's been an honor to serve, and thank you to the members of the public that came out and hold us accountable, and we're honored to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I've already spoken to the manager about this. I think, you know, this is going to be the last budget I vote on, but this is going to be the first budget I vote against. I talked to Mr. Jones about this. This is no fault of staff. I think staff did what council told us then to do. The priority was very clearly to have a revenue-neutral budget. And I want to kind of demystify a little bit about that. I would disagree that this is not a tax increase. When 80% of people are going to be paying more taxes, that, to me, is a tax increase. But what is happening is basically we are bringing the same amount of revenue. So, you are paying more and getting the same amount. And when you figure for inflation, in some ways, you're getting less. I think this budget is kicking the can down the road for some difficult choices and potentially much larger tax raises in the future if we are going to look to fund our priorities and look to make a more equitable Charlotte. When you look, for instance, when you look at wages, yes, nominally, we did a lot of good things to increase wages. But when you figure inflation, the real take-home is going to be not no take-home for our salaried employees, no increased take-home for our salaried employees. There's actually a wage loss when you look over the past three budget years. When you look at our salaried employees, there is a slight increase, but it's barely enough to keep up for our, excuse me, our wage-earning hourly employees. What that means for the public is that it's going to be very difficult for us to keep the skilled workers that are necessary to provide the critical services that are necessary. So, those salary workers, I feel like we're going to lose a lot of good, important talent over the next year to the private sector, and those wage workers, especially those that have professional certificates, professional certifications. It's going to be difficult for us to retain. You know, we, one government, especially a municipal government, cannot change entire economies. So, it's certainly going to be harder for people to live in this city over this next year. And while, again, there are nominal increases, and we're doing a nominal new things in terms of trying to keep people from being displaced, I don't think our priority going into this budget cycle was to do everything that we can to find new ways to indemnify as many people as possible. You know, more people are going to be displaced. And I don't think we have leveraged, for instance, the ARPA dollars that we had still this year with the priorities that I wish we would have given the manager and the staff, I mean, the manager and his staff for securing and making more equitable investments. Look, it's good, you know, it's a good thing to say that we have no property tax increase this year. But I reckon from everything, all the data that we've been presented over this process, that you will be looking at a multiple cent increase next year, and perhaps more the year after that. So, I think there's more that we could have done this year, more that we should have done this year. And I wish our priorities were that, and therefore I'll be voting against this budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I definitely want to thank the budget team for their work and for accepting our challenges. I questioned a lot of the numbers that were being presented to us because I needed us to be as transparent as possible, especially when we were looking at the salaries of our employees. And when we were stating what was presented as the cost of living for a rental in this market today, I shared some of the concerns of Mayor Pro Tem regarding how we're moving forward. And I did have multiple conversations with the City Manager of what would it look like for us to at least have a one cent increase for the simple fact that I was concerned about next year and the year after a 3%, 4%, 5%, 6% increase. We know the county has passed its budget. Yes, it is challenging. Yes, for those that are looking, the property evaluations, that's going to kick in for '24. So, hopefully we have some time to figure out how to work with Peter and Paul to get the money together based on these new rates. But that is going to be a challenge. So, money has, was identified to help to offset those new tax rates for some individuals, not for all. And we have a challenge with who gets to be into that sum based on federal guidelines of what is the area median income. I also agree that I felt like we could have been a little more strategic with our ARPA funds on the front end because I am concerned about, yes, we have a revenue-neutral tax rate, but what is that going to do for services when we still have almost 100 people a day moving to the city? And our residents who have been paying taxes are being displaced and are struggling in the city. And when we, there was a time that government work was prime. We grew up, so I am what, Gen X? So, with thinking of that, we grew up thinking if you got a job with the government, whether it was in sanitation, whether it was actually working administrative, that was a win for you and your family and to change a trajectory of poverty. Well, now what we have is our employees living in their cars, living in hotels. So, I do appreciate the fact that the budget team came back and gave us a way to increase the pay. The question is, is that going to create a wage to live in the city of Charlotte for today and for the next five years? Not even 10 years. We saw a major shift in our economy just in five years. So, as we move forward, I will be supporting this budget. We worked hard on it. Yes, we can do better. Yes, I believe the City Manager has heard from council repeatedly. And we also have a responsibility when it's time for his review. He knows the importance of the issues in our community. He's heard from our city staff, from our sanitation workers, as well as our bus drivers and their safety, and our fire department and all that they've had to just endure in just in the last four or five months, as well as law enforcement. I think the concern and the express urgency has been expressed to you. So, we have some flexibility. This budget, there is some room to make some additional adjustments to help our community to be successful. So, I definitely do want to thank you, even though I tell you all the time I'm thanking you for doing your job because I expect for you to do your job well. So, I don't think it's going above and beyond the expectation that for you to bring us a great budget. But I appreciate the fact that you worked very closely, and you came in working with this team. And we have a AAA bond rating. That helps us in the long run. The market is going to do what the market is going to do. Interest rates are going to be something that we don't have control over. But what we do have control over, when we're looking at how do we protect our employees, the over 8,000 and their families, I hope we have some opportunities in this budget and throughout this upcoming fiscal year to make the necessary adjustments for our work base that are at this level versus those that are at the executive level. They're going to be okay. I'm concerned about those who are our everyday workers that might have a challenge getting to work themselves because of the cost and them not being able to have stable housing. And, you know, they might want to eat on a regular basis. So, with that, I do thank you, but I especially thank the budget team. But I will continue to put y'all and ask you to. But I will continue to put y'all and ask you to figure out ways to do it better because I don't personally benefit from it, but I am, all of us are having conversations with residents on a daily basis that are trying to figure out how to maintain a quality of life in this beautiful city that is ours. So I'm putting that in your capable hands as the manager of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, a budget should reflect your priorities, and I think this budget clearly reflects other priorities of this current city council. Kudos to our city manager, Marcus Jones, and to our great budget department for bringing us a budget. Let me just highlight a couple of things that I think on January 31st, when we talked about our priorities, one was a new initiative, our workforce development. I think now we've been very committed on this council to make sure we address workforce development in this budget. The city manager has hired a new workforce development special assistant. She will start with us on July 20...
31st.
31st? July 31st? And so we are very excited. Also, this budget reflects how we feel about nonprofits. Those in the community who's doing great work for us. So let me just highlight five new nonprofit that we'll be funding in this budget. Those who, you know, Block Love Charlotte, or The Struggle, The Mail's Place, Carolina Metro Reds, thank you, Councilmember Watlington, and Christ's Assistant Ministry. Councilmember Johnson felt like we need to increase their level of commitment. We did. So now we are funding Christ's Assistant Ministry over half a million dollars. And last but not least, my chairman forgot to mention this, but because of collaboration with the city and the county, we give them a 25% reduction on profit taxes to low and moderate income within the Charlotte city limits. That's called the Home Program. So I hope the citizens will be very proud of the work they know and the staff, but this council has identified as our priorities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those words and expressions, especially the explanations of the values and the priorities that each council member gave. So we have a motion before us to adopt the fiscal year 2024 operating budget and fiscal year 2024, I'm sorry, 24 to 2028 capital investment plan. So no further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. All right. Madam Clerk, you're good? Anyone... Well, I'm getting here. Just kidding. Let me breathe. Anyone opposed? We have one council member opposed. And I like to think of it as not just ideological, but the way that he has the vision for what we're trying to do in the future. So thank you. All right, the next item is item number 12, is Eastland Redevelopment Reservation of Funding. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution to reserve up to 20 million in the Convention Center Tax Fund Future Certificates of Participation for Eastland Redevelopment to be utilized with planned public-private partnership funds in the five-year General CIP program to accomplish an approximately $30 million investment in the 29-acre Eastland site owned by the city? Do I have a...
Motion to adopt and approve, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion of second, a third, fourth, and fifth. Is there any discussion, Ms. Molina?
Of course. Wow, where do I begin? First off, thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to speak. I would like to first say thank you, Mr. Manager, and your team for thinking outside of the box. This has been something that has been open-ended and beyond the council's control for a long time. There've been things that have been outside of, like I said, the control of the council, and I'm happy to see that we are making a commitment to East Charlotte, to say that we're going to, you know, do our part so that this, one of the two proposals, my, that's my hope, one of the two proposals that we currently have is going to make it all the way to the finish line. I want to take this moment, if you'll allow me, to speak directly to the people that I serve in East Charlotte. I've had some feedback about the survey. We do have a survey. It is live. The purpose for that survey is for me not to make this decision in a silo. I don't even want to make this decision based on the information solely that we can collect it in 2019 because technically both of the proposals have something based on the information that was collected in 2019. And so if we, as a council, decide to do that, you know, someone is going to be upset. I mean, potentially, no one's going to get exactly what they want because there will be some people who want one and there will be some people who want another. But I think this is a real opportunity to reengage the citizens, the residents of East Charlotte, to gain your feedback, to allow you to be an active participant in this particular decision and to allow us, then the council, to deliberate over that decision once we've collected that information as best as we possibly can. It, it's really tough to create questions that are going to be inclusive to every single thing that we need. And so with that in mind, I've asked our manager and staff that we have an additional meeting. What I'm trying to do here is do my due diligence as a servant leader and to, is to engage you as much as possible, to give you an opportunity to give me feedback, to lay out, one, two, three times, however many times that we need to, what's on the table. And so what I'm hoping is that we can secure a date really, really soon and get that information out via our city channels to let you know when, what time, and where. And I'm looking to do that really, really soon in collaboration with my wonderful colleague, Mr. Mark Jarrell on the County Commission, who has been really, not only as a constituent, as he tells me often, he says, "Marjorie, I'm also your constituent. I live in the district." And that also is true. But as a counterpart and leader and a stakeholder, the county, I, I feel like it's important to have him and that side of our leadership body at the table as well. And so I look forward to getting that date out so that we can put this in front of you. I, I asked the members of this body to, and I know many of you already do, it's, I, this won't be lost on y'all. We're doing something amazing tonight to make sure that we can protect the funds that would belong to the potential project for East Charlotte. And I'm, you know, I'm thanking you ahead of time and agreeing with me in that we need to take, you know, and do this. Shameless plug, I do have a town hall coming up aside from this, on June the 22nd. And I'm going to bring in some really interesting leaders because as, you know, as I've taken the seat and I've gotten acclimated with this leadership position, what I've learned is that I need to continue to learn. And so this is an opportunity to lay out some qualitative and quantitative data specifically about East Charlotte and what we need. And you're going to sit there with me. We're going to learn together. We're going to have the right community stakeholders at the table. And that way, we can ensure that we're not, you know, making decisions from an ideological perspective. We're going to, what I hope in this town hall and bringing the stakeholders that I've asked to come, we're going to co-locate some data so that we know exactly what we're working, we're working with, exactly what the needs are, exactly what we're targeting. So from a leadership body and, and, and staff perspective, we'll be able to create tailored solutions. That's my hope for East Charlotte. So stay tuned for that. So that's two separate meetings. I want to make sure I put that out there. June 22nd is a town hall where we get serious about data and information specifically targeted, targeted towards East Charlotte and what we need from an economic and jobs perspective, which we need a lot. And then look forward to a meeting where we're going to, myself and County Commissioner Mark Jarrell and our respective staffs, we're going to come before you with the information about Eastland. This is a first step. This is the body saying we are, allow me to use the word earmarking, the money that we'll need, and it'll be sufficient for either one of the projects, should it be the will of the council to go forward with one or the other. And so I want to definitely put that out. And please, take the survey. That is your opportunity to engage with us and let us know what it is based on the two proposals that you see, that you like, or maybe even that you don't like. That can actually be found on the Charlotte website. And if you don't have it, feel free to reach out to me, I'll be happy to direct you to the survey if you haven't already found that online. So I look forward to the body supporting this, and I absolutely, with both hands, will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Molina. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, let me thank Councilmember Molina for her leadership on this issue. Thank you. Also, I want to thank the committee for the work we've done over the last four months in reference to Eastland Mall. I stand ready and committed to work with you, the residents of, of your district, for a outcome that's transformational and brings jobs to your district and to really highlight all the tools that we have in our toolbox to support economic development issues and efforts along the Eastland Mall corridor, throughout corridors of opportunity, et cetera, workforce development. So we stand ready to support your efforts. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion hearing? Oh, yes, Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As my colleague, Mr. Graham, said, Councilmember Molina, thank you for your leadership on this. This was a prerequisite for me to support any other hospitality fund request because Eastland has been sitting there for over a decade. We need a catalyst. We need a destination point for our region. I thank Tracy and her entire team for addressing that request, written assurance that shows our commitment to, to the east side with financial and staff resources. I, I agree with Councilmember Molina that there is a lot of due diligence that is needed because we do not want to see any more disappointments. And I'm sure Maureen, who is sitting here from the Charlotte East, would agree with me, who has been at this even longer than I have or Councilmember Molina has been. We got to make sure that we do our due diligence to find a partner that has capital to make this happen, that addresses the community's needs. While we do our due diligence, it's got to be done with a sense of urgency. And I think this resolution shows that commitment that we have. So I, I thank our entire economic development team, as well as Mr. Jones, for continuing to show our commitment to this, and I look forward to supporting this. And I will do everything in my power to support Councilmember Molina and our Economic Development Committee to really see a catalyst on the east side that we have waited for over a decade now.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Just hearing no further discussion. All in favor of the motion as read as to adopt the resolution to reserve up to 20 million in Convention Center Tax Funds and Certificates of Participation for the Public-Private Partnerships for approximately $30 million total investment set aside for the 29-acre Eastland site owned by the city. All in favor, please raise your hand. You don't get to vote twice on this. I let you have the town hall. You can't hate.
I love you, Madam Mayor.
All right, one hand. Anyone opposed? Vote is unanimous on the record. No opposition. Thank you very much. And thank you to the members of this, our east side community for the support and effort to get this done in a way that we all can be very proud of. Our next item is item 13. It's BMOX Sports LLC. Is there a motion to authorize the city manager or his designated negotiating agreement or agreements between BMOX Sports LLC and the city of Charlotte in an amount not to exceed 65 million to assist with the construction costs associated with a world-class tennis campus at the River District that will house the Western and Southern Open as well as other year-round tennis and entertainment events? And item B, which is adopt a budget ordinance appropriating 65 million and the proceeds from Certificates of Participation in the Convention Center Fund for construction costs of the tennis campus at the River District. Do I have a motion?
A move?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. It's indeed an honor as well as a privilege to, to speak to this item and speak to the historic nature of public-private partnership in the city of Charlotte. It's, it's really embedded in the DNA of the city. The partnership with BMOX is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, not only to solidify Charlotte's reputation as a true sports city, but also to grow our city's economy with substantial number of jobs and much-needed revenue for our travel and tourism industries, also to have the ability to support our restaurants, hotels, small business that give Charlotte its character and its charm. There's four reasons why I believe this council should support this opportunity. One is the opportunity itself. As I indicated, it's a once-in-a-generational economic development opportunity to bring a world-class tennis tournament to Charlotte with the corresponding facilities. The economic impact is nearly $300 million a year for our travel and tourism industry. One in nine citizens work in that industry. Their waiters, their bartenders, their Uber drivers, restaurant, hotel, small business, as I indicated, that supports the industry. The ability to have international marketing and branding opportunity is a price tag that we can't afford to pay for. It certainly gives us an international presence for two weeks of the year and associates our city with some of the leading cities around the world, Rome, Madrid, Shanghai, Paris, Los Angeles, Miami, Monte Carlo, and Montreal. In addition to the tennis, there's over 20 other events for concerts and entertainment. So certainly, there is a, a very significant economic impact that goes beyond the, just the jobs, but the marketing and branding. Secondly, it's the community engagement, impact, and investment, and starting with the River District itself. It's really unusual for you to have the ability to really begin a process, what I call, community building, really to build a community, and that's exactly what we'll be building upon. The work has already started there, but we have the opportunity to really kind of accelerate what's happening over there. As you remember, two months ago, the city council afforded $6 million for affordable housing through our Housing Trust Fund with the minority vendor to build those housing for us. The petitioner has agreed to create a park-like campus with a lot of open space. Certainly, there'll be a lot of public availability to the facility. Tennis players will appreciate this. There are currently no clay courts in the city of Charlotte in Mecklenburg County. And for old guys like me with bad knees, we need clay courts. There also is no indoor public facilities for tennis in Mecklenburg County, as well as a more need for pickleball courts. This project will help with all those initiatives, clay courts, indoor, and more pickleball. The addition to grassroots programming and partnerships, after-school programs, summer camps and scholarships, there's a really true community engagement piece to what they're doing. And I, I think that's really, really great for our city. Lastly, it's the component for diversity and inclusion with a 20% goal towards construction, professional service, vendor and suppliers, workforce development initiative, and more importantly, what they bring to the table in reference to their nonprofit relating to educational scholarships, participating with inner-city schools and grassroots initiatives. Also, the, the partnership with BMOX is, the request is reasonable. One-third of the total project cost for public participation, which is about $65 million for the city, and having the opportunity to work with other community partners like Mecklenburg County and the state of North Carolina. Hopefully, they will see the same value in having a tournament in our state and our county as we do. We've already started very informally to try to, begin to talk with various departments to accelerate permitting and infrastructure development. The goal is to have the tournament played in Charlotte in 2020. The goal is to have the tournament played in Charlotte in 2026. Again, very informally, we're starting talking to one another internally so if we were to be presented these opportunities, that we could hit the ground running, as well as providing access to the city airport-owned parcel for additional parking. Tremendous opportunity. Want to thank a number of community stakeholders along the way. All the college tennis programs in the city, Charlotte, Queens University, Johnson C. Smith University have reached out in support of this initiative. The Charlotte Tennis Association, the Dilworth Tennis Group, and last but certainly not least, the HTA. They have been a great champion behind the scene in terms of steering us in the right direction, making sure that we have the proper utilization of the funds necessary to support hospitality and travel and tourism. And I want to thank you very publicly, Mohammed, for your support for getting us to this point. I encourage the council to vote in affirmative for this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I'll be honest, initially, I was skeptical about, you know, something that seemed too good to be true. But I will thank the tennis community of Charlotte for being willing to talk to somebody who had really no idea what this meant and to, you know, really, really sell what this means. You know, I remember a couple years ago, Tracy Dodson, Marcus Jones, and Tyrell Jaiba kind of stood in front of council and brought us at the behest of council new ways to, you know, a different look at the way we invest our tax dollars. And it was really about not making one-time big splashes, but finding ways to layer investments on top of each other, to really, you know, amplify the effect of public dollars that gets spent in our community. And that's what I really see this as. You know, firstly, this is what the hospitality tax buckets were created for, right? How do we invest in ways that brings more revenue, that refills those buckets, provides more opportunities to the community, and really serves as a catalyst for job growth? Visitors come into this city and the continued economic development of this city. So Mohammed, I see you up there. Thank you for continuing to advocate for why this bucket exists. This is going to bring jobs. This is going to bring gigs. I can tell you, from a person who has worked in entertainment production, particularly in sports, live sports, for nearly the past 20 years in this community, there are not a lot of opportunities that are presented to a city, a community like this. That's even why I couldn't even initially wrap my head around this. This is different than a professional league expanding. This is different than just dealing with growth and shows getting bigger. This is something that usually doesn't come around. I wouldn't even say this is once-in-a-lifetime. This is just once in, you know, once in your imagination. So this is going to be real jobs. This is going to bring real opportunities that didn't exist. This is going to bring new workers and the need for new capacity into our community. I think about layering on top of the investments and the idea of the River District, right? This accelerates the realization of the vision of the River District that was set by the community and previous city councils. I think where we could have seen this, the River District developing in 20 or 30 years, all of a sudden, you're looking at what's going to happen there in five, 10, 15 years. That is something that I don't think was anticipated when River District was formed, but we had the opportunity, and because of that vision from leaders in the past, we were able to hit it over the net.
I like that.
One thing that, you know, as I was thinking about this, you know, we're already building affordable housing over there, right? We're already building a good amount of affordable housing. So with this signature development, this ensures that we will have mixed-income, diverse-price-point living in one of the most desirable neighborhoods, not just in this city, but around. You can guarantee that there will be market-rate housing that exists over there. But to have the foresight to make these investments, and it was difficult. We had to kind of re-up the amount that we invested to make affordable housing existed over there even before this project came through. This ensures that affordable housing and the ability to live near places that you work is going to be possible. So again, this builds on the foresight and the visions that not just this council, but previous councils, has set forth. And then, of course, our airport. Our airport is a, our airport, you know, this is layering on top of the investments that we put there. I don't know if this would even be possible without Charlotte Douglas Airport, where it is, the way it is situated, and the ability for it to serve our community and other communities in the way it does. So when you look at all of those things combined, and the layering of these public investments, this is, you know, honestly, a marginal amount in the grand scheme of the return that this community is going to get from this investment. So I'm grateful to be able to bring this to Charlotte, and I look forward to it thriving in our community.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Bakari?
Thank you, Mayor. So the vast majority of publicly-funded arenas and stadiums end up being a very bad deal for taxpayers. There are exceptions, though few and far between, where the right deal can be architected that makes sense for a community. And I've come to the conclusion that the Western and Southern Open tennis project that sits atop the transformational River District project by Crescent has one of those rare and acceptable ROIs and is thread of the needle. The annual economic impact, as we've all heard, is 302.4 million estimated. The direct impact is 42.1 million, of which 16.6 million remain with the state and local governments. And if you're wondering what that includes, that's the direct annual taxes that are collected. The proposed 135 million of subsidy from the state and local governments has an eight-year payback period based on that. This is in addition to a reimbursement-style approach for public dollars to the developer to minimize clawback risks, and it includes a 25-year tether for the tournament here in the Queen City. Over that 25-year period, in today's dollars, that would generate a 3.1x direct return for the local and state governments. While an eight-year payback period isn't something we normally search out in the private sector, in the world of government deals like this, where the payback period is often never, it is acceptable on a relative basis. On the city's $65 million proposed investment, the initial estimates indicate that there will be a $4 to $5 million direct tax revenue per year. While this makes the city's payback period of 13 years less desirable, our role in leading in this deal among the other public partners makes this approach justifiable, and the indirect impacts of this deal help balance that out. Those indirect impacts include the 6,700 jobs created during construction, 60 full-time jobs created on the campus, plus 2,500 additional peripheral jobs, and 200-plus event days generating 650,000 annual visitors. Most importantly, much of these subsidies we are investing sit on the backs of our hospitality workers: the waiters, the bartenders, the hotel workers, and the cooks. It is critical to always hear their desires for where we invest these funds, and I'm glad we did that, thanks amongst others to the collaboration with HTA and Mohammed. Good job to all those who worked on it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bakari. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Chairman, I will be supporting this, such in item 13, because I think it's a great opportunity. But there also is another reason why I'm supporting this event. There's a young man who's been teaching tennis in our community for many, many years. I use the word "young" affectionately, and I think this would be a great opportunity to continue to raise the profile of tennis in the City of Charlotte. Coach Davis has sent so many youth to colleges through tennis, and not only the sport for building good character among the students that he has taught. So I'm excited about the opportunity to raise tennis profile through Coach Davis' experience as coaching ability. I think sometimes we don't reward those in our community who have labored hard and who do the right things, and I'm excited about this opportunity because I think BMOX has reached out to Coach Davis about a partnership. Partnership that's long overdue, but I think it's the right time. So Coach and BMOX, I look for a successful venture in the coming future. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My colleagues have all made great points and great, they've made great case as to why we should support this. This is once-in-a-generational opportunity, and I will be supporting this. I'm very excited now that prerequisite has been met. With Eastland Resolution, I will be supporting this, and I look forward to welcoming BMOX to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just speaking with the manager, trying to remember. This was the second-largest project. So the Goodwill Opportunity Campus was the first. The River District was the second. And we were able to get some commitments in writing regarding what the River District could be because the goal was to create truly diverse-price-point housing. What does that look like? That was something that we hadn't talked about at that time, many years ago, with having a place for the workers as well as the owners to be. And you had this clean slate. I don't necessarily agree there was going to be a 15-, 20-year build-out. What's happening at the River District is going to happen regardless. Yes, this can be an attribute. I personally aren't, I'm not necessarily so on it being this. It could be anything. I mean, Charlotte is a growing city. It is a privilege to do business in the City of Charlotte. It is not a given to do business in the City of Charlotte. They have a space that they've been operating out of. There are plenty of opportunities for our city, but I do have an affinity, if there is a clear commitment for our local leadership because of the respect and what I have seen from Coach Calvin over the years. I've served in this body almost a decade, the first time around. Now, coming back, we were working together long before this conversation came before our radar. If he is a part of the front end and very clearly has stated on the front end, that gives me a little more comfortability with moving forward with the vote. My one vote doesn't make that much of a difference. It takes six, but there was a clear goal for what the River District could be and for it to not be an area that is like a number of pockets in our city that prices out the workers and does not create opportunities. So having not only multifamily that was mixed income, but single-family that created opportunities for people to be involved. Yes, I have clear concerns about traffic. We have PNC. That is a nightmare if you are trying to attend an event. So seeing that this will bring more concerts and events, we just had a major concert three nights ago at one of our current venues. They couldn't even fill the space out. It was only the lower level that was running it out. So the more event spaces, that's a cute idea, as long as it's something that's truly going to benefit our community, giving more opportunities for growth. Unlike some of my colleagues, I don't necessarily feel like this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It's a great opportunity. It's a convention. It's a tournament. We have plenty of tournaments. We have golf. We have NFL. We have NBA. We have minor-league baseball. We have soccer. We have a lot of entertainment in our city. This city is a beautiful city that has a lot to offer. So I wish that we would remember that at the forefront, which is why I believe they want to come here. We have amazing weather, even though you might have all seasons in a day. We do have amazing weather. We have access to the airport. Where we're located geographically is an amazing location. So it is an honor for you to be in our city, just as much as it will be an honor for us to work with you. If that is something that happens, I want that to be a clear commitment on both ends, not an aside of, oops, I forgot. If I have not decided still yet, and I'm still over here praying on it, to be perfectly honest, but I will say the fact that you have a respected local leader who has a proven track record of not only in the community, but having our children, and I'm saying, all of our children in the city, to have the opportunity to receive scholarships, to be educated, to learn a skill that has taken them to college and beyond, and they have come back to our community. Coach Calvin, your work in this community goes a long way for me. So when the time comes, again, I am still praying on it. That is a major reasoning for me to truly consider my particular vote with moving forward because I need to make sure that our community is going to be protected regardless of what happens because you're currently in location. I want to make sure this is a good investment for our residents, for the City of Charlotte. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Molina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I won't belabor the point. I feel like a lot of my colleagues have already made great points. Mr. Manager, thank you for being creative, you and your team, Economic Development. Tracy, you probably could get some sleep tonight. I imagine you've had long nights, you and your team, and not much sleep, so maybe you could sleep soundly for a day. But I appreciate that the BMOX team, you know, I imagine this coming into any type of relationship, whether it be business or personal or whatever. You come in the door and you see what looks like discourse, and a lot of the times, if it's any type of relationship, you turn around and walk away. You know what I mean? So I guess I appreciate the patience while we, I'll say it again, we work through an existing longstanding opportunity for east side. And I do realize that these are two separate opportunities, and I do realize that they're distinct opportunities, and I'm very heartened by the potential of this opportunity to bring jobs and economic impact to our city overall. The light that it will bring to our city, I'm very encouraged by what I see, and so I definitely will be supporting this. I also had a prerequisite, and it was to ensure that, you know, the 29 acres, 28 acres that remained in the Eastland Yards project was going to be secured, and our team was successful in, you know, making sure that we have those funds. So thank you, council, for supporting that unanimously, Marcus and your team. I look forward to supporting this as well tonight. I'm excited about the opportunity to see both the west and the east experience economic impact, and I'm looking forward to it. So thank you.
I am really grateful that all of you can remember all of the dialogue around the River District. I mean, I'm amazed by that. So I think that the word that I would use in this case is "opportunity." But this is opportunity that we should expect of ourselves in the city that we're growing, and it shouldn't be our last choice, but we are going to struggle with some of this. We are going to struggle with how do we use our hospitality funding. We're going to struggle with how traffic works. But at the same time, we have to come together with the idea that the people in this city deserve the ability to have jobs, and that's what we are creating. We're creating jobs for people in this community that need those jobs, and will have a place to live, and will have the opportunity to participate in our economy. I truly want to say thanks to Crescent. I don't know how many years ago it has been since we approved the River District, but I would have always expected that it would be I would have always expected that it would be something that we would add value to our city, and now we have the opportunity to see how we can do this and add this value for our sports industry and what we're accomplishing in all of this. So I think that we have a motion on the table, and I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to accept or to authorize the manager to negotiate this deal, please raise your hands.
Ms. Malina.
All right. Thank you. Anyone opposed? All right. So we have all yes votes, and thank you very much for what you're doing, and believe me, it's the beginning of the journey. We all know, but we appreciate it. We're going to be looking forward to it. All right. So our next item is item number 14. Let's shift our emphasis to adopt a resolution approving an option agreement and ground lease of city-owned property located on Providence Road West and Ballen Croft Parkway, and the parcel is identified with Crosland Southeast Communities for a 60-year term for affordable housing, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute documents necessary to complete the option and the ground lease of the property. Do I have a motion? Second. Motion and a second. I'm sorry.
I understand. Move to approve AMB.
Well, I read the words, so. All right. So with that, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Item 15, is there a motion to approve an $8 million Housing Trust Fund allocation to Woodline Noah LLC, an affiliate of Ascent Real Estate Capital LLC, for the acquisition and rehabilitation of Charlotte Woods Apartments, and to approve an annual reimbursement to the Housing Collaborative in an amount not to exceed the Development City Tax Bill for a naturally occurring affordable housing rental subsidy program over a 20-year period for 40 new long-term rental subsidies at Charlotte Woods Apartments for households earning 30% and below the median, the area median income, and authorize the manager to negotiate, execute, amend, and renew the contracts as needed to complete these transactions. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Here, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about this particular deal and the impact that it has on affordable housing, and in particular in District 1. Without the intervention of the city and the collaboration with the county and the Housing Impact Fund, this property would have been sold either to a developer who was looking to build a luxury tower or to a developer that was looking to increase the rents by over $500 a month. And there were multiple developers who had made bids for this property. The deed restrictions on this property will protect existing residents from displacement and lower current asking rents by a range from $250 to $1,000 per month, and that's based on an AMI of prospective households for new residents. And then lastly, I would just like to just highlight the benefit of the NOAA rental subsidy program for 30% AMI households. It is an incredibly effective tool that we've utilized, and it has brought tremendous, a tremendous amount of units onto and protected those units onto the system within the city of Charlotte. So I'd like to thank our partners who have been helping us throughout this process with Ascent, as well as the collaboration with the county and the Housing Impact Fund. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any further comment? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, did you? Okay. Any other comment? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. All right. Anyone opposed? Mr. Bakari is opposed. All right. Now, our next item is the item 16, sale of city-owned property for affordable housing. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of the following city-owned properties to the Westside CLT for $1 for the development of four affordable for-sale housing units? .4 acres at 801 Ambassador Street, .19 acres on Ambassador Street, .21 acre on Columbus Circle, and .27 acre on Columbus Circle, and authorize the city manager to designate and negotiate and execute documents to complete the sale of these properties. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve AMB.
And a second? All right. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Mr. Bakari is opposed. All right. Tonight, the city council will make appointments to boards and commissions. The council members vote by ballot and submitted their ballots to the clerk earlier during the action review. Any nominee receiving six or more votes is automatically appointed. If no nominee received at least six votes, a runoff will be necessary, and council will be asked to vote tonight to determine the highest vote getter. That person will be appointed to the board. All appointments will be recorded in the official minutes of this meeting. The clerk will now proceed with announcing the results of the ballot. We will start with the appointments to the Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Access Corporation.
For the Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Access Corporation, Frankie Sutton received six votes.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Frankie Sutton? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Move to approve.
Second. Do I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the appointment, please raise your hand. Is there anyone in opposition? I think that was unanimous. Tonight, we will also consider nominations to various boards and commissions. The council members submitted their nominations earlier via email. Names of nominations will not be read at the dais. Tomorrow, the clerk will email city council the names of the applicants that received at least two nominations. These candidates will be considered for appointment at the next business meeting. Any applicant receiving six or more nominations can be considered for appointment tonight upon a motion, second, and a majority of vote of council. The names of all nominees will be recorded in the official minutes. The clerk will now proceed. We'll start with nominations to the Alternative Compliance Review Committee.
For the Alternative Compliance Review Committee, incumbent Priscilla Ash received 11 nominations. Incumbent Eric Zavro received 11 nominations.
Do I have a motion to approve? We have a motion? Second. And a second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the appointments of the two candidates, please raise, it's unanimous. The next one is the Beckler Arts Foundation.
The Beckler Arts Foundation, incumbent Margaret Switzer received 11 nominations.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the nomination of Ms. Switzer? Move to approve. We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the appointment, please raise your hand. Mr. Mc, thank you, Ms. Graham.
Can we all approve at the same time? One motion?
Can we do the rest remaining? We're going to go and start at the Business Advisory Committee and as listed, and you'll read them. Thank you.
For the Business Advisory Committee, Abhijit Shinde received 11 nominations. Catherine Morrison and Robert Roll received 11 nominations. Gregory Brown received 11 nominations. Incumbent Maurice Kumar received 11 nominations, and incumbent Shaniqua Thompson received nine nominations.
Do you approve all with over six?
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of accepting all of the nominees, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. All right.
Would you like me to read through all of them?
Yes, let's go through all of them. We're trying to get, she's going to read every one.
He made a motion, I mean, there are still.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said "and." I thought you were done. My bad.
No, no, no. We're just, we're now on, are we on the International Cabinet? Cabinet. Thank you.
For the Charlotte International Cabinet, Brittany Ports received 11 nominations. Jeff, Joseph Hoff received 10 nominations. For the Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Access Corporation, incumbent Janket Gatner received 10 nominations, and Pamela McCarter received 10 nominations. For the Charlotte Neighborhood Equity and Stabilization Committee, Eric Lamo received nine nominations. For the Historic District Commission, incumbent Philip Goodwin received 11 nominations. For the Passenger Vehicle for Hire, incumbent Joe Gentry received 11 nominations. And for both the Stormwater Advisory Committee and Transit Service Advisory Committee, there were no applications, and they will come back.
Move to approve all with over six.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of those nominees as stated by the clerk, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. We have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mary.
Go Nuggets.
Hey, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Do you have an announcement?
Announcement. It's okay. We have an announcement. I just wanted to announce that I'm having a town hall this Wednesday at the Mallard Creek Recreation Center at 6:00, at 6:00 PM, 6 to 8. Thank you.
Thank you for telling just us that now.
Luckily, the community is still watching.
We'll not be there.
All right. Thank you.